Okay, everyone, we are on the record. And please remember to silence your cell phones like I'm doing now. Okay, today is Wednesday, the sixth day of December in the year 2023. This is a special meeting of the Jersey City Municipal Council. We had a scheduled 4:00 p.m. start. The clock on my cell phone is showing 4:00 p.m. exactly. May we have a roll call for the commencement of this special meeting? Councilperson Ridley is absent. Councilperson Prinzieri. Councilperson Bajano is absent. Councilperson Saleh. It's not here. Councilperson Solomon here. Councilperson Gilmore. Councilperson Dejees.
Here.
Councilperson Rivera here. And Council President Waterman. We have six council members in attendance at 4:00 p.m. Can we kindly rise for a moment of silence, please?
Former corporate counsel Jeremy Farrell.
Before we move on, I just wanted to mark Councilperson Saleh present at 4:02 p.m. So now we have seven council members. And now I see Councilperson Bajano coming in at the same time at 4:02 p.m. So now we have eight council members present at 4:02 p.m. On behalf of Council President Waterman and members of the municipal council, in accordance with New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the posting on the bulletin board of the first floor of City Hall, which is the annual notice, the schedule of meetings and caucuses of the municipal council for the calendar year 2023, and filed in the office of the city clerk on December 15, 2022. In addition, this notice of the notice of this meeting was sent out on Thursday, November 30, 2023, at 3:25 p.m. And the agenda of the meeting was similarly disseminated on Monday, December 4, 2023, at 5:40 p.m. to the mayor, municipal council, business administrator, corporation council, and the local newspapers, and posted on the city's website. So I can certify as to our total compliance with the Sunshine Law. So council members, just so, and members of the public and everyone watching at home, I just want to state for the record, we have eight council members present. So for a resolution, a majority of the members present to pass would be five affirmative votes. Okay? With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to our Public Safety Director. Thank you, Director. And just another reminder to make sure to keep the aisle clear. All right. So council members, our sole purpose for this meeting is to consider Item 10.1, City Resolution 23-903, which is a resolution of the Jersey City Municipal Council concerning Israel and Palestine.
Can I read it into the record?
If you would like to, Councilperson Saleh.
Okay. Okay. A resolution of the Municipal Council of Jersey City concerning Israel and Palestine. Whereas Jersey City is a city of diversity, one of the most diverse in the United States, standing as a beacon of light, hope, and opportunity for all people and cultures. And whereas Jersey City residents embody a spirit of acceptance and respect, and have worked together to establish a city where each person is valued and celebrated. Whereas Jersey City condemns hate and terror in all its forms, whether it's racism, antisemitism, Islamophobia, LGBT, anti-LGBTQ, sexism, and terrorist attacks in the United States or across the globe. Whereas Jersey City decries the horrific attacks on October 7 against innocent Israeli civilians. And whereas Jersey City also decries the loss of all innocent Palestinian civilians killed in the subsequent war. Whereas all human life is precious, no matter their faith or ethnicity. And whereas Jersey City mourns the loss of all these lives. Whereas the Hamas terrorists that committed the acts of October, the attacks of October 7 do not represent Islam nor all Palestinians. And whereas millions of lives are at imminent risk from further escalation of the conflict, both in Israel and Palestine, as well as in the region. Whereas Israelis, Jews, Palestinians, and Muslims live side by side in Jersey City, where we celebrate each other's faiths through interfaith iftars, Passover seder, and community activities. Whereas both Jewish and Muslim communities in Jersey City are grieving the innocent lives lost and the current escalation of conflict in the region. Now therefore, it be hereby resolved by the municipal council of the City of Jersey City as follows. The City Council for the City of Jersey City resolves our unwavering opposition to hatred and racism in all of its forms, and will continue to foster an environment that values diversity and upholds the principles of equality and understanding as the golden door of America. Two, we call on Governor Murphy, Attorney General Platten, and the New Jersey State Legislative Representatives for Jersey City to provide more resources to combat rising cases of antisemitism and Islamophobia through public education, identification, as well as the vigorous investigation and prosecution of hate and biased crimes. Three, we call on the City of Jersey City Communications Department to work alongside the Jersey City Police Department to establish an anti-hate campaign that informs residents what to do in the case of a biased crime and how to report it, as well as a campaign that celebrates the diversity of our city. Four, the City Council for the City of Jersey City resolves to work alongside faith leaders and community leaders to hold a meeting to find ways to unify this city, provide support, and discussions on community healing. And five, we're encouraged by the negotiated humanitarian pause, which will allow the flow of desperately needed humanitarian aid, as well as the release of some of the hostages. And we call on President Biden and Jersey City's congressional delegation to call for a permanent ceasefire, which ensures the release of all hostages and the unrestricted flow of aid to Gaza, as well as justice, safety, security, and healing for all Israelis and Palestinians through a restart in the peace process. Thank you.
Okay, council members. So I'm going to be calling for a vote on Resolution 23-903. Councilperson Prinzieri.
So firstly, to Councilwoman Saleh, I want to thank you for the enormous amount of work you have done, listening to all of our communities across the city and how the conflicts that are happening with Gaza, Hamas, and with Israel, and how they're affecting everyone here, and trying to find a way to bring people together. Personally, I grieve for our Israeli community and our Jewish community. And I grieve for our Palestinian community and our Muslim community. And it's very clear to me, when listening to all of these groups, the amount of trauma, and emotion, and pain it's causing you all. As a city councilperson, I also need to be very aware of how world effects impact our local community. And it is also very clear that because of this pain, it's been very hard to reconcile how we're going to move forward with this resolution. It also is, you know, challenging when I have parents call me from both communities talking about how their children don't even know how to talk about what is happening here. And it is, you know, also very, very concerning when we're seeing an enormous uptick in Islamophobia and antisemitism because of the events that are happening and playing out in the world where we have no control. And in addition to that, the focus has shifted from the council, from some of the things of the work that we are tasked to do by the electorate body, which is going to budget hearings, which is making sure that our constituents have heat, which is making sure that potholes are filled. And I do not come to this decision lightly, but because I cannot reconcile these, I'm going to have to abstain.
Okay, Councilperson Bajano.
I would like to see a committee formed or a task force be created to bridge the gaps between the various groups involved in order to solve these issues. I'm going to vote yes, because I hope there's peace. But as I said, I want to see a task force formed and have these issues solved between these various groups.
Thank you, Councilperson Saleh.
I want to thank everyone who passionately shared their perspectives during recent council meetings, through your remarks, calls, emails, various forms of expression. Our diverse Jersey City community is a tapestry of beauty, pain, raw emotion, and your voices have been heard and deeply empathetically woven into this text. Our freedom of speech, a cornerstone of democracy, allows us to express our opinions openly. Over the past two months, the council has endeavored to craft a unifying text that reaffirms Jersey City's commitment to our beautiful communities and condemns hate and prejudice. Starting as a response following the October 7 attacks to condemn Hamas, this resolution was written also to emphasize our values as a city, where people of all backgrounds thrive together. We wanted to stand and be counted when these incidents immediately affected our communities here in our home. As the son of diaspora Palestinian immigrants raised in the Heights with seven sisters, this journey is deeply personal for me. If my parents had not sought a better life in this country, I might have faced the fate as many Palestinians today who are detained or killed in historically high numbers, especially following the last seven weeks. Despite the gravity of the situation and our limited municipal powers, we brought forth a resolution to condemn Hamas and reaffirm our commitment to combating antisemitism, Islamophobia, as we actively work to protect our local houses of worship with security assistance and coordination. Mayor Philip has worked tirelessly with the Jersey City Police Department on that front. This resolution, while not a solution to the broader conflict, is about celebrating our city and allowing our richly diverse city to stand and be counted. A resolution condemning Hamas will not somehow scandal them into changing course. A resolution calling for Biden and global leaders to bring a ceasefire will not magically make it happen. It's about giving the Jewish and Palestinian communities a voice to feel seen and heard. It's about supporting both communities that have seen a rise in hate crimes across the country. It's about emphasizing the moral consistency to condemn violence wherever it occurs, regardless of the victim's ethnicity or faith. This chamber has served as a forum for those passionate discussions, and for each side to hear one another. Personally, I am both and at once horrified by the loss of innocent lives in Israel and the indiscriminate bombing in Gaza that is being funded and supported by our government. A critical mass of Jersey City residents of conscience representing every hue, from young Jewish Americans to Arab citizens of Christian and Muslim faith, and every mosque institutionally within Jersey City and New Jersey writ large, has called for a ceasefire. This, the language in this resolution advocates for a bilateral ceasefire with the return of all hostages, seeking peace, justice, safety, and security for both Israelis and Palestinians. Over almost two months, we worked tirelessly to perfect the language with Jersey City constituent support and comment, collaborating with council members, community leaders, residents, and organizations like the ADL. And despite our best intentions, the outcome may not be universally embraced, because the issue is larger than this resolution. The resolution serves as a Jersey City-centric effort to make our affected communities feel heard. The issue does not exist in a vacuum. Our most affected communities have weathered tensions, bigoted attacks, and we've addressed security concerns, especially with synagogues and mosques. The issue impacts us here at home, and there's a legitimate fear that regional instability affects the safety of Americans, Israelis, and Palestinians alike. I remember vividly how the world changed after 9/11 and the abject fear I had as a child at PS28. And I went into public service to ensure that I did my part, that we didn't make the same mistakes, and that we do not continue vicious cycles that previous leaders have left us, all unsafe and vulnerable. We do that through community service, action, dialogue, activism, tolerance, acceptance, and understanding. And regardless of today's outcome, let's hold space in our hearts for the affected communities. Please exercise civility and respect my colleagues as I respect them. Our shared hope is for a future where Palestinian and Israeli brothers and sisters enjoy peace, dignity, freedom, and security. While it may not happen today or tomorrow, let's consider that this is not the end, but the beginning. The beginning of more dialogue and conversations with community leaders, and most importantly, with each other. Our interconnected communities, both here and abroad, require reasoned and empathetic consideration of this crisis for the sake of our futures and our future generations. I dare to dream of a world just like Jersey City, where there's not only diversity in color and creed, but diversity in thought and speech. A city like Jersey City, where we can discuss, protest, rally for causes both locally and globally. A world like Jersey City, where every nation and every person is given an opportunity to build a better life in equality, dignity, and respect, and where the rights to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness are inalienable. A world like Jersey City that has served as a safe haven for generations of immigrants seeking to build a better life. I dare to dream of a world like Jersey City, where a mayor that is the grandson of Holocaust survivors and a first-generation son of Palestinian immigrants can both be elected and work together towards common good. Regardless of the outcome, it is my hope that this resolution serves as fertile ground for these discussions. We do not live in the Garden of Eden, nor am I naive enough to think that we ever will. We have to create our own version of Eden. One where we commandeer our identities, work tirelessly with each other and with our communities, where we can cease looking at each other as caricatures of our fears and relish in the richness that we can offer one another. Thank you. I vote aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
I want to start by thanking my colleague for his leadership and those beautiful remarks. I want to explain my vote and approach and start by telling everyone what it's going to be. And I will abstain today on the vote. And I understand that that is a vote that makes no one happy, and I would only do so if I genuinely believe it is the right thing for our community. I want to share an email I received from a constituent a few weeks ago that stuck with me and helps explain why I believe it is the right decision. And my constituent wrote, although I am personally supportive of a ceasefire in Gaza, I don't think anyone voted for you or your council colleagues to navigate complex issues from the world stage. I'm all for council members expressing their opinions on national, international events via social media and op-eds, but I fear that spending time and debating resolutions that would at best have a microscopic impact on the unfolding events in the Middle East only distract from the many serious local issues we face. For sure, take steps to make sure every Jersey City resident feels safe and secure, but I can tell you that Netanyahu and Hamas are not listening to city councils in America. That was his remarks, and I think there was wisdom in his assessment. In my six years in office, I have not addressed or introduced a resolution about affairs outside our country. And while I respect everyone who has advocated and believes this resolution will influence our state's congressional decision-makers, those who have the power to make change, I respectfully dissent. Senators Menendez and Booker, Congresspeople Payne and Menendez, their positions are unaffected by our actions here. I know the organizers who support the resolution have spent time lobbying our federal representatives. And to date, I have not seen those representatives host meetings, heal division, or explain their positions in detail. I deeply, deeply, deeply respect the effort of my colleagues undertook to find common ground. And as my colleague just said, regardless of the outcome, that the process has to become fertile ground for our next steps as a city. However, despite those extraordinary efforts, we have seen division grow in the city, that that division is significantly bigger than everything in Jersey City, but we are seeing it before us. When I ran for office, I promised my constituents that I would focus on Jersey City and that my intention will be always to place Jersey City first. That does not mean I do not see and am deeply moved by the extraordinary pain that I have heard from Palestinian constituents, from Muslim constituents, from Jewish constituents, and Israeli constituents. I know that my decision will not please members on both sides of the resolution who had asked for yes or no. But my pledge is to listen, to see common ground, and to foster communication and compassion. My guiding principle remains doing what I believe is best for Jersey City. And this commitment will continue to be the beacon as we navigate these challenging times and work towards healing in Jersey City. Vote as abstention. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilperson Gilmore.
I want to thank Councilman Saleh for his leadership on his resolution. Thank all of you who reached out, whom I talked to, sat down extensively. I've been meeting with people for easily the last week up until this meeting right here. Fortunately for me, I really have, I don't have no political position to take, as I really don't look down the road, I don't care about reelection, I don't know if I'm going to run again. So for me, this is not a political decision for me. I have took in everything that everyone has said. And for me, I'm trying to find the common ground, what is right here. And the resolution is saying that Jersey City despises hate of all forms. Councilmen have worked tirelessly with both communities to bring forth a resolution. And I understand the sentiment that some people are saying, well, you know, we shouldn't really be discussing international affairs. That's a valid point, but it's in front of us, right? We have to do something about it. So I'm going to vote aye in a sense that when I hear of someone say ceasefire is stop the killing on both sides. So for me and my vote, that's why I'm going to vote aye. Irregardless of what happens, whether it passes, it fails, or whatever, I think we all do a disservice to the conversation if we don't continue to work together. I'm sure that we don't agree with the same decisions we make every day, right? So we just have to find it in our heart to, one, throw religion out the window, the race, throw culture. We are all human, we are all creation of a greater purpose. So in light of all that, I'll vote aye. I will continue to reach out and work with aye of the South.
Councilperson Dejees.
I'd like to start off thanking Councilman Saleh for working tremendously and incredibly hard to put this together. Not only did you work very hard bringing communities together and getting the language beautifully written. I understand how much of a weight this has put on you and how hard, you know, this journey has been. So I really thank you for your commitment to this work. The language that you put together about Jersey City and us being a community that rejects hate is true. I believe everyone up here in this room and throughout the city condemns all violence and all hate with all groups. We want nothing more than peace for all people. I do, however, believe that as an elected body, we need to continue to work locally to support the communities that feel this hurt and feel fear. And I'm thankful that we've been able to give all different groups a choice. The passage or failure of this resolution is going to result in one of those groups or sides to feeling fearful. And because we were not able to find middle ground, and because we were not able to drive home the sentiments of the resolution of recognizing Jersey City as a haven of hope and love, I am going to also abstain on this vote, but committed to working with all of the groups to bring us back together and to do the work that we can to make sure our community does not reflect any of that hate or agitation here.
Thank you. Councilperson Rivera.
As a councilman of the City of Jersey City for 10 years, I'm deeply aware of the diverse community that we do serve. The proposed resolution advocating for ceasefire between Israel and Hamas, drafted by my council colleague Youssef Saleh, is a matter which I think we can all agree requires international diplomacy. However, after carefully listening to perspectives and sentiments within New Jersey City and following a period of thorough reflection and respect for the wide array of views held by our residents, I've decided to abstain from voting on this resolution. Our city's diversity is not just the characteristics, it's our strength. It's essential that any decision made by this council honors and respects the mosaic of cultures, beliefs, and opinions that make Jersey City unique. While the global issues are complex and illicit, strong emotions, our primary focus must remain on fostering a community that upholds respect, inclusivity, and understanding for all its members. I will abstain.
Thank you. And Council President Waterman.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. This has been such a challenging resolution for us all. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Saleh, who has been pretty much in the thick of this. Not only that, the last meeting, he was disrespected, just trying to do the right thing. I've met with leaders on both sides. And at the very beginning, when I had a conversation with them and they asked about resolutions, could we put anything forth? I told them then, I said, I will abstain until you guys can come together and work together on what the wording should be. I said it from the very beginning. I have met with them again. There is still no unity along this line. What I have seen, this resolution has tore our community apart. Either way, somebody's going to feel like they're the victim, and somebody's going to feel like the winner. As representative of both sides, I will abstain. But I gave an offer out to those leaders. I said, I grew up during the civil rights era. And when we were fighting for freedom and Dr. Martin Luther King was leading, he always demonstrated peace. And part of that... leading, he always demonstrated peace. And part of that peace demonstration was when we serve one another. It was. And so January is coming and that's the day of service that Dr. King put aside for us to serve communities. I said it would be good if both sides can come together and do some type of service and televise that, put that on Facebook. Because Jersey City is so diverse, we have to show people that we are united. We are against all forms of hatred. That's just who we are as a people. But I seen this resolution tore our community apart. I've seen it. It really did. And so that's why I'm abstaining. I said it from the very beginning. They have not come together. No one is really listening. One side want a resolution. One side don't like the word ceasefire. There has not been no neutral ground, no common ground. So that lets me to know, no one is really listening yet. We're not at the listening point. So with that in mind, that's the only reason why I'm abstaining, really. But I do believe in equality. I do believe in freedom. I do believe in humanity. I do believe we all should have a voice. But this voice have to be united because this is such a delicate situation, very delicate. So I'm open to see if we can do some type of service together. I'm open. I said it before, I'm open. No one walks out this room a winner today. No one, because our city has been divided. So now let's see if we can unite our city like it once was. Let's respect each other and let's make the world see that in Jersey City, this is a place where you can feel safe.
So?
Don't have to clap. Nobody don't have to clap. Okay? Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Resolution 23-903. The vote in the affirmative was made by councilmembers Bajiano, Soleil and Gilmore. And abstentions were made by councilperson Prinzari, Solomon, Dejean, Rivera and council president. So the vote is 305, which is defeated. Resolution needs five votes when you have eight council members present, if anyone wasn't here from the beginning.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn is made by councilperson Soleil and seconded by councilperson Rivera at 4:32 PM. On the motion to adjourn, councilperson Prinzari, councilperson Bajiano, councilperson Soleil, councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejean, councilperson Rivera and council president. Motion carries 8-0 with councilperson Ridley absent to adjourn at 4:32 PM. Thank you so much, everyone present. And thank you so much, everyone watching at home. Remember teamwork makes a dream work. Have a great rest of the night.
Guys, keep, keep it civil, please.